Excuse me, is there anybody out there who's expecting to be at the energy meeting downstairs?
Okay.
I guess not.
There were two people that just said downstairs.
Anybody want to go down to the energy? All right, we're on. All right, good evening, welcome to the July ninth New Market Planning Board meeting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Next on the agenda is public comments. Does anybody have anything to speak about that's not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll close the public comment session at 7:05. Next is review and approval of the June 11th minutes. Is there a motion?
Sub move, sub approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? Comments, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, I am abstaining as I was not here. All righty, next is appointment of an alternate. Edward Seeley, is Ed here?
Yep.
Oh, do you want to just step up and spend two minutes also a little bit about yourself? I see your application.
Sure.
Would you please come over to the mic just in case people at home can't hear?
My name is Ted Seeley, I'm a recent transplant to New Market, hail from New Jersey and Newark City. And my experience is, my background, my education is in city and regional planning. I have experience in both local city planning in New Jersey. And I've also worked in development, housing development primarily for affordable housing and market rate housing as well. I currently work in Waltham, so pretty far commute down there. But I do development projects all over the Northeast, so Massachusetts, Connecticut, Rhode Island, New Hampshire. So I feel like I can bring a lot to the board in this community and I'm happy to be here.
Ted?
Have you had dinner with Demos?
I have not had dinner with Demos yet.
Got to have dinner with Demos in Waltham.
Okay.
I come from Watertown, so that's why I asked.
Okay, that would be good.
Put that on the list.
Yeah.
Demos.
All right, so is there a motion to appoint Ted as a, as an alternate?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify. Any discussion they should ask?
And that's for a one-year term?
It's, um...
Twenty twenty is the date expiration?
Yes, twenty twenty, yep.
Is he filling up?
That's a good question.
I think there was a couple of options and Sue had discussed it with you and...
Yeah, I believe it was twenty twenty.
You wanted to try for the first year and continue on. You have to, right?
Yep, see how it goes. Perfect. Any other discussions, comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, oh yes, 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 yes. So actually, Val just reminded me, you have to go see the town clerk at some point get sworn in, if you would, before the next meeting. All right, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is notice of merger, Michael and Elaine Mangan at ten to twelve Nichols Ave, tax map U two, lot two thirty-seven, to merge lots described indeed as tract one and tract two. Book five one three two, page two three nine three. Ms. Hardy, is there a recommendation?
Yes, we recommend that the notice of merger be authorized by the planning board and typically the chairman signs it on behalf of the board. And basically, it's just merging two lots together and there's a special process in our RSA's that provide that opportunity. And usually, it's for tax purposes. And we have a copy of the notice of merger here. And with the board's consent, we'd like to have had this recorded so we can get this taken care of. And Mr. Mangan is here if there's any questions.
Just going to ask, is there anybody here, is there applicant here or any representatives? No, do you have, is there anything you'd like to add to this, sir? Okay, it's easy enough. Does the board have any questions?
One, have you reviewed it for zoning compliance? This merger does not affect, create any zoning issue?
No, it does not. Do you need to get it typed? We have a handwritten copy here, Mike, and Susan said she needed to get a typed version and get signatures on that. Sue Jordan, our administrative assistant.
Okay.
Because I don't think...
Well, you can't record it.
Right.
It can't be recorded if it's not fully typed. Except for the signatures. All right, thank you.
So I'll just, do you have, are there three lots here now?
Four, two.
Sorry.
I am, thanks.
All right, is there a motion?
Would you like to look at it, Val?
Nope, no, I'm good. Jump ahead. Make a motion to approve the notice of merger from Michael and Elaine Mangan at ten twelve Nichols Ave, tax map U two, lot two thirty-seven, to merge both tracts one and two under book five one three two, page two three nine three into a single lot.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is public hearing for an application for a lot line adjustment requested by Jablonski Family Revocable Trust at thirty Bay Road, tax map R two, lot eighty-two, and Jeffrey K. Jablonski, thirty-four Bay Road, tax map R two, lot eighty-two dash two. The proposal is to adjust the property line by conveying twenty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-five square feet from lot eighty-two to lot eighty-two dash two. Is there anybody here representing the applicant?
Oh, I do have...
Could you introduce yourself, please? Could you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Ray Visson from Stone Law Survey.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a USB drive with the plans on it.
Good luck with that.
I will tell that it was...
Okay.
Well, I do have a hard copy of these. If somebody needs a copy, I do have it.
Take whatever.
Yeah.
Yes.
So my name is Ray Visson from Stone Law Survey and I'm representing Vivian and Jeffrey Jablonski and the Jablonski Family Revocable Trust. First, I'd like to just start off a little bit about the history of this property because it's actually kind of interesting. Original tract was purchased by Antonia Jablonski in nineteen nineteen and has been in the family ever since. In nineteen eighty-seven, Chester and Lor- uh, excuse me, Lorainne Jablonski subdivided the property into three parcels. In two thousand and five, Gary Jablonski purchased the three parcels and then put it into a trust in two thousand and fourteen. In two thousand and sixteen, parcels one and two were formally merged. Jeffrey Jablonski purchased lot three in two thousand and sixteen. So it's been in the family for a hundred years, which is pretty nice and continuing to stay. Now Vivian and Jeffrey are planning on building their house on lot eighty-two A. The existing lot line between lots eighty-two and eighty-two A cuts across the field. They would like to adjust the boundary line to allow for better access for proposed driveway. The adjustment would also remove the power line easement burden from lot eighty-two. The planned adjustment would transfer point six five acres from lot eighty-two to eighty-two dash one. Minimum lot size requirement is two acres and both parcels would exceed this requirement. The proposed area for eighty-two would be two point one five acres and eighty-two dash two would be two point six eight. Wetlands have been delineated on both parcel, properties. We are asking for a waiver from the required one inch equals one hundred foot scale as described in section four point zero eight of subdivision regulations to one inch equals thirty feet. The current scale provides more clarity and ease of reading than the required one inch equals a hundred. Any questions?
Any questions by any board members? All right, hearing none. Ms. Hardy, you have a recommendation?
I want to start from the public first.
Oh, is there anybody from the public here that would like to speak about this?
Do you want to accept the application first before you open up the public comments?
We could do that.
I guess so.
My recommendation on that is that the application is complete.
I've been away.
Soil information was, was missing and I called Mr. Visson and he sent some information over to us. So the only thing that's outstanding at this point is the waiver, which I would recommend be issued because obviously, the plan, if it was a third of the size on the sheet, would barely be budgeted. So it's a lot of information here, so I think it reads well. And so I would recommend approval of, acceptance of the application for review and acceptance and approval of the waiver and acceptance and approval of the application.
Okay, so first things first, the application. Is there a motion to accept the application as complete?
Sub move, substantially complete.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Doucette. Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the application as complete, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it unanimously. All right, so now, is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this, open up the public hearing? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. And we should discuss the waiver request first. Is there a motion on the waiver?
Make a motion and we accept the request for waiver from graphic scale requirement of one inch equals a hundred to allow for one inch equals thirty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made second. Any discussion?
I think you should make a footnote for us to change that regulation sometime.
Agreed.
I agree.
All those in favor of approving the waiver, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. And next on to the application itself, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for the lot line adjustment requested by Jablonski Family Revocable Trust at thirty Bay Road, tax map R two, lot thirty-two, and Jeffrey K. Jablonski, thirty-four Bay Road, tax map R two, lot eighty-two dash two, to adjust the property line by conveying twenty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-five square, square feet from lot eighty-two to lot eighty-two two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made second. Any discussion?
Minor, minor little things. So Rocky and County Registry is going to kick this back, they had a tax map lot number under the title block. I don't know, silly, but they're going to make you do it.
Actually, I already got a pre street.
Yeah, they missed it.
I can add that on there.
Are New Market monuments, the requirement is bounds at the, at the lot corners, intersecting with sidelines, right? So not every single corner, but do you intersecting with the both sideline and the roadway?
The one at the road?
Yeah. And then you require monuments at all corners. Super picky little thing. Just look at your preference, plan reference number two as a little type.
All right. Any other discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the waiver, say aye.
Aye.
I mean, I'm, excuse me, the application, not the waiver.
The motion.
All, yeah, all in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. All right, next on the agenda is seventy-seven Hershey Lane LLC, Walter Cheney Chinburg Builders, Inc., public hearing for an application for special use review for an open space, single-family subdivision on twelve acre lot. Lot is located at Hershey Lane, tax map R four, lot three in the R two zone. The application is available to review at the planning board office during normal business hours.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. So Mikael, I'll appoint you to sit in on behalf of Bill.
Hello, Alex, one's from Hershey Lane LLC, Walter Cheney Chinburg. Just a little bit of background, this parcel is owned by Hershey Lane LLC, whom you guys know as Walter Cheney. I originally came to the planning board last September with a plan that looked like this. You guys didn't actually get to see any plans, we just talked conceptually. After leaving the planning board with your blessing and thoughts that duplexes could be doable on this lot, I went to the zoning board of adjustment and was granted a variance to do duplexes on this lot. As Walter and I finalized plans to do duplexes, this is what the plan was going to look like. We were in the final stages of that. Walter Cheney and Eric Chinburg, who both developed in town and who are friends and have been longtime family friends, were discussing the project. And Eric was interested in purchasing the property, the property went under contract, and Eric much preferred to do single-family houses. So the application that you see before you today has changed substantially from duplexes to single-family houses. That's a little bit of background on how it got there. We're here tonight to show you that plan, talk about the changes, and answer any questions that you have. We have some outstanding items that are needed for the conditional use permit, which we're willing to get. Fields engineering is planning to work on those with the planning staff to get those for you. We wanted to receive any comments from you in the public regarding the application to see what we could work on and then come back for the next meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. I, I do know from discussing this with Diane that there are, you know, several issues that are lacking, I guess. First and foremost is, I haven't seen anything that has a boundary survey on it. Is that being worked on?
It is. That was a misunderstanding. We thought the boundary survey was completely finished upon further review. It needs to be redone. It is being redone.
Okay.
This is a design review, Harry?
It was, it was originally advertised as a special use permit, but when we found that it was, there were a few items that were still outstanding. I did talk with the engineer on the project and I think Alex, he conveyed that information, that it would probably be everyone's advantage to maybe discuss this in a design review given the fact that all the abutters have been notified. And I know the abutters have some questions because they've been into the office. So I suggested to Eric that, given that we don't have specific detailed plan requirements for a special use permit like we do for subdivision or site review, that it would be in everyone's best interest.
So tonight, we're just doing this as a design review?
Just a design review for consultation purposes.
Will you be anticipating any waivers, requests?
No, at this time.
Relative to the conceptual that was presented last year for the duplexes in the impact area, proposed impact areas? How does, just how does this compare? Is it similar?
It's the same footprint.
Same footprint?
It's the same footprint. There's minor adjustments, but seventy percent of the open space is still preserved.
Okay.
So eight point nine five acres of open space will be preserved on this twelve point eight acre percentage.
Thank you.
All right, I'll open up to board members for other questions. Do you, one thing I noticed on the plan was you have some steep slopes in the roadway, which you've looked at. You can make the grades work?
Yes, in, are you talking about the yield plan or the open space?
The open space.
Yes, all of the grading, they, the engineers think they can make it work.
Okay.
There'll be some blasting and some fill.
Okay, okay.
Unfortunately, our engineer couldn't be here tonight. He had a few other meetings to attend, but he'll be at the next meeting. Yeah, a few others.
It's the way of the world nowadays.
Any engineering directly questions, I'm happy to relay to him and get answered for the next meeting.
Sure. Without hearing a lot of questions at this point, board members can think about it, look at it, whatever. I'll open up to the public for a comment because I know a bunch of abutters are here to talk about this. So we'd like to hear what you guys have to say. So who wants to go first? Anybody?
Glenn Wilkinson, sixty-six Magnolia Lane in New Market. One of the questions I have on the, on the new plan is there an anticipated square footage design for the houses at this point?
Between fifteen hundred and two thousand square feet.
Gotcha. With that roadway being exceptionally, that, that corner is a very tight corner. In fact, that's one of the few times I'll touch my foot to the ground with my motorcycle. What are you going to do to sort of open that up and allow for safer turning into and out of Hershey Lane?
I think all you have to do is address your questions for standing.
Excuse me, Alex, yeah, address them here?
Okay.
And then we can get the right people to, to do that?
Yeah, so yeah, the other question I would have is that, you know, is there going to be, because of that sharp corner right there, are they going to do something, can they do something to either straighten that out or make, widen that up for some turn lanes, especially turning left into there at that point?
At this point, there's nothing on the plan that shows that.
Yeah, no, there's not.
Right.
So that, that would be something that would be very important. Obviously, I backed right up to that and within a pretty tight space to that. So any blasting activities, any rock pounding activities are going to be of utmost concern, especially for quality of life. It's a very quiet area right now. And then the other thing would be is what the look of the feel of these places are going to be. Are they going to match, you know, it's a very wooded. Nobody really looks into anybody else in that development that's behind there. Are they, you know, are they going to ensure that they're sort of keeping that privacy that's in the adjacent neighborhood into the new neighborhood as well? Thank you. Yeah, the only comment I've got is that those are some crazy cuts and fills. I've built landfills. No.
Thank you, Glenn. Anybody else want to comment on this? Come on up, ma'am. Just please give us your name and address, if you would.
I'm Phyllis Sanduson, seventeen Lilac Lane. Kind of just what Glenn was saying, I'm very concerned about, that's a very curvy road there. And you have the school buses, are the school buses going to stop and let children off, pick up children from there? People whiz down through there and this, and you come around that curve and there's a school bus, uh, the visibility is not that great there. We do, a lot of us in the community walk back in there. You know, we heard about the condition of the nature trails and what would happen to them in regards to this development. It's also very swampy back there. Is there any chance through the blasting, could that affect the new well that's been, you know, the groundwater that's there for that well? That's kind of what I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Glenn Wilkinson again. Uh, the other thing that, uh, I looked at this and I had a concern about, is trash trucks getting in and out of there. Or any vehicle, larger vehicle getting out of there, ten, ten ax or ten-wheel truck would have a hard time.
I don't think anybody out here can see what kind of shelf.
Jeez, Bill.
Alex is gonna have to play the game.
Yeah, good point.
I'll take care of that for you.
Good point.
It'd be nice to be able to see him. He's in the back there.
Give everybody a little bit of time to digest it.
I have a smaller copy, I can pass it over.
That would be good. That would be good.
My name is Steve Kessinger. I live at, uh, forty-two Dogwood Lane in New Market, which is, again, part of the property that would be in an abut. Couple of questions that I have. One is, the amount of traffic that Hershey Lane, Hershey, going from one oh eight down to Gra, Grant, Grant Road, Grant Road?
Grant Road, yep.
Uh, and apparently, I just, just found out by looking at these maps, that it's not Hershey all the way down. But that amount of traffic, the road is seeing a lot of wear and tear. Uh, the, the sidewalk that ki- kids use to, to walk to school, teachers walk that, might be going back and forth, is in really bad shape. And I'm just concerned with additional properties that are being at least considered at forty-four Hershey. Is, is the town gonna be prepared to maintain Hershey and, I'm sorry, but I've forgotten the name of the road as it extends down the hill?
It's Hershey Lane.
No.
Oh, Darrell Drive all the way down, Darrell Drive.
So, um, that's an awful lot of traffic. And, and again, I'm concerned about the potential for, uh, any, uh, serious excavation, like blasting or, um, driving, the, what do you call it, pounding?
Pile driving.
Pile driving. Uh, the potential impact that has on the new well that was, that was put in there. Not only are we depending on that well now, but if we're putting eleven homes in that area, and then we're looking at more homes possibly on forty-four Hershey, I can remember a few years ago when we were at a stage three water conservancy. So, we're doing a lot of development, and, uh, that, that's something I think needs to be done. The other question I had, last question, is, it was initially presented as six two-unit condos.
No, it's ten.
It was twelve.
Seven, seven, okay, sorry.
All right, sorry. But now, it's showing, it's showing eleven single-family homes. So, is it, is it eleven?
Yes, at this point, that's what it is, yes.
There's a analysis that we need to do internally to determine what the density would be based on the ability of the land to support that number of units.
Right.
And that's really part of the next step, which is part of the, uh, special use process. And that's the information that we are looking forward to be able to continue that review.
And, I apologize, one more question. Our community, the Sewell Farm Condomining Association and the Sewell Farm Community Association, share a lift station. And, I, I need to make sure that there's, there's no contemplation of using our lift station to support this, this development's, development's need, because we just, our capacity can't handle that.
If you own it, you, you don't have to let anybody tie into it. That's, that's your business.
All right.
We can't force you to let them tie into it.
All right, that's good news. All right, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I'd like to just address a couple of the comments I heard as best I can. I understand the concern about the well. Um, if I remember right, the well is quite a ways away from this property. It's way down the hill and back and almost in the wetlands. So, I don't believe that blasting will, will impact the well. However, um, going forward, as this goes forward, um, those types of issues are gonna have to be addressed by the applicant if questions arise based on that. But the, the well is way down, it's gotta be a thousand feet away from here, I'm guessing, down through the woods, down Hershey Lane and out back there. The comments about the roadway, um, it's the town's responsibility to maintain the roadway. As part of this process, if we get to the point with site plan review and everything, the DPW director, this, the, um, police chief and fire chief will all have a chance to weigh in on access, site distance, all that kind of stuff as part of the process. The same, I guess the same with the school bus, the school department will have to look at where the school buses would stop if there are children there. And the last one, um, I think Phyllis made a comment about the nature trails. I'm not aware of what nature trails, and maybe Alex can, are there any trails on this property that are open to the public? I don't think so, but...
There are no trails that are open to the, to the public. There is the classics road, of course, that people could, could walk through. There may be people that walk back there, and that's no problem, but there are no public nature trails back there.
The lane is not posted.
Right.
Right.
There are no trails for.
So, for the, for the abutters that are here and everything, this is the start of a process, and you're more than welcome to, and we hope you attend next meetings on this, um, as we work through the details. This is very, very preliminary at this point, and the devil is always in the details. So, this would be a, a two-step process. It's the special permit, and if this special permit passes, then we would go through the site plan review process also.
How's the town council involved on the classics road upgraded to class five?
I would like to mention that. Um, there's a section of Hershey Lane, as shown on the plan, which is considered a class six road. And class six road is a town road that has not been maintained for a period of five years. And in the New Hampshire State statute, there are very specific guidelines on getting approval, not only from the planning board for the upgrading of class six roads, but there also needs to be an approval process with the town council. And, um, one of the things that is of concern here is that in order to have a, uh, open space development, you need to have at least fifty feet of frontage on an approved class five roadway. So, in order to create the subdivision, they would have to upgrade a portion of the class six section of Hershey Lane and make sure that it provided adequate access for the residents. And also, um, it would have to meet town standards. And that's gonna be a negotiated process, as Eric mentioned, with the planning board and the technical review committee and the other departments department. But I did wanna highlight that that's something that will be addressed, and it will take a couple of meetings of both the planning board and the town council to sort through that process.
Do any board members have any other questions? Alex, could you come up to the microphone for a minute? I have, I just have one question. It's a, a general question. Sewer, what, what's the idea to do with sewer?
So, there is existing, there's existing sewer across the street in an adjacent, uh, project, and the sewer will be brought to the site.
From that project, through an easement of some sort or?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions?
I had a, just a couple of comments after, I sent out my letter on Friday to you folks. Um, I started looking at some of the alternative plans. And I just wanted to point out that there is a restriction in our subdivision regulations where you can't have a hammerhead style design at the terminus of the roadway if it's a subdivision greater than six lots. So, that's one of the waivers, or, you know, you'll have to work through that process. Also, um, for s- for subdivisions, uh, open space subdivisions, we just don't have the standard buffer requirements for hydro A and hydro B soils, the fifteen or twenty-five foot buffer requirements. There's a hundred-foot upland buffer requirement that comes into play. And when we did previously other projects, that was a waiver that had to be considered by both the planning board and the conservation committee. So, I just wanted to bring those to your attention.
Thank you.
Is there any additional feedback you'd need, you'd like to get from us tonight? I think you've heard the concerns of the abutters and...
So, we're gonna go back to where to work through the rest of the conditional use permit process, get all that information to the planning office for their review, and we'll be back once that's ready.
Excellent. Yeah, um, I guess, does, do we wanna continue? We really, really...
Well, we're continuing a public hearing on design review. Or they actually made their application for a special use permit.
We haven't determined it was.
We haven't accepted the application.
But we, they still can.
We would just have to re-note five the abutters.
We could continue.
Right. We didn't accept the application, 'cause there were some things missing, but...
So, you could just continue the hearing?
Correct. Is there a motion to continue the hearing?
What is our date? Thirteenth, is that correctly?
The thirteenth of August, that's right.
Make a motion to continue the hearing for seventy-seven Hershey Lane LLC, Walter Chini and Chinburg Builders Inc., regarding subdivision of tax map R four, lot three in the R two zone to the August thirteenth meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passed unanimously. We'll see you in a month or so. Thank you very much. Thanks to all the abutters for coming. If you have any other questions, feel free to contact the planning office. We'll let everybody clear out here for a minute.
Is this the kind of thing we would do at Sarnell?
Eventually. Have to accept the application. Yep. Alrighty, next on the agenda is new old business, discussion of impact fees. And I understand last month at the meeting, um, there was quite a discussion about, I think it was Eric DeWitt's request for a waiver of impact fees. I just received this evening, uh, memo, um, and information from John Mayberry. Has everybody received that?
Bruce Mayberry.
Bruce Mayberry.
Yep, yep. Okay. So, there's a couple of things I think we should talk about anyways. If anybody has anything else, please feel free to jump in. The first is a threshold question of, the planning board makes a recommendation to the council on any changes of impact fees. And I understand over the years, there has been a lot of discussion kicked around about whether we want to have impact fees or not. So, you know, that's a threshold question. We have to, we don't have to answer it. If we do nothing, there are, there are, um, impact fees. But I'd like to get everybody's opinion on that. Then, after that, um, this, we can have a discussion about, um, the memo, the information provided, and what we wanna do, if anything, to adjust the impact fees. So, I'll just open it up to board members for whatever we wanna talk about at this point.
So, I'll just kinda, yeah, I'll chime in on some history here. So, the last time we did go to the council with, um, a, uh, recommendation, it, it's actually referred to on page seven of Mayberry's, um, memo. And this is regarding the utility capacity fees. We adopted a system development charges under the water and sewer ordinances and not come through the planning board's impact fees. That's, and when you go to any of the impact fee conferences, or when they speak about it, at the land use, um, conferences, that's the biggest recommendation that they make. So, I would think this...
Say that again, they make recommendations.
Did, did...
To do that or to do that?
That they're adopted not as impact fees, but system development charges. So, right now, you have a water tie-in or sewer tie-in. That should be reflecting what is needed to, for the capital, um, infrastructure, and expansion of that capital facility. And the RSAs provide for that. So, it doesn't come through the planning board. It goes through the building permit process for tying the fees. I would definitely encourage that the council, that the planning board take that position again, as we have in the past, and hopefully, the council will adopt that. And I think my only other, um, discussion point relative to impact fees in general, if then we're looking at the, uh, capital needs of recreation and, uh, school, expansion of capital needs at this, for school. You know, the last time we looked at this was two thousand, or twenty years later. Should we be looking at this as a whole and bringing that up to date? Or dealing with this as a separate entity? Or making a recommendation to the council whether or not we wanna continue with impact fees, which is a big one.
So, a quick question, just maybe to add, that we talked about recreation, right? And, um, if my memory serves me correctly, we were talking about the assisted living facility as well, and, and that. Do we need to consider the demographical groups in, um, some of our senior population? And would there be any more demand sets on the senior center? And/or special needs that the town would have to do to help facilitate that as well? And would that be part of the, the impact? Just something that, I don't know if that's out there, but if, if we're, if we're targeting, uh, um, a more mature, um, community and, and, uh, do we, will there be special needs that they would have?
Or is it in the capital improvement plan now for expansion of recreational facilities?
If it's part of the CIT, the capital improvements plan, and that, the senior center comes under the jurisdiction of recreation, so they could conceivably put forward a proposal to use impact fees to address the special need groups and, you know, the growth in that, um, capacity.
Okay.
So, ever thought of having one general fee that would cover sort of any kind of category within, within the CIT?
It has to be specific, kind of our... It has to be specific to the RSA. And there's, there are other things you can use impact fees for, but we've chosen not to. Transportation improvements is one. Conservation land fifty-one, you know, they would have to be, you know, addressed in the methodology.
Are we, we are not, as a planning board, under the ordinance, the planning board should be getting the, um, the reports annually, but...
We get them, and they are, and they're, they're generated monthly. Finance department issues a report. If you'd like me to make those available to planning board, I can certainly, yeah.
For planning board, but has the, has the town half had, ever had to give back money? Because it hasn't expended our own capital?
There were, there were a couple of instances, actually, I, I wanted to just make clarification. There have been instances since two thousand where we have brought Bruce Mayberry back to do some work. Right after the, uh, pitch development proposal was, when the first school log up issue wasn't approved, he came back and did some follow-up research, and, um, I can make those reports. They're all in my notebook here, available to you. And also, as part of the review that we did in two thousand and eleven, he went through and also updated a lot of information and made some recommendations to us as well. So, I just don't wanna mislead that we haven't done anything since two thousand and nine, 'cause that's not correct.
No, I'm just referring to the fee structure.
Right, and the fee structure is probably out of date, and it needs to be reevaluated and updated. And, you know, there really is a, a gap in the fee structure, 'cause we don't have anything for A to use. And a lot of communities are moving forward with some revisions. And the data that Bruce has pulled together will show that, um, you know, those types of uses do not demand the type of services that a conventional multifamily housing unit or development would. So, um, I think there's a strong argument to be made that, yeah, um, we really need to have that special category. And it's necessary for an administrative standpoint, because, you know, somebody comes in, they wanna know right up front, what's the fee gonna be for this, and it needs to be quantifiable. And it's difficult for us to advise people without having... And it's difficult for us to advise people without having, um, you know, some clear standards that we can apply that can get to heart of the matter quickly for the applicants.
Yeah, I really don't like the fact that ultimately we seem to spend a lot of time on people coming in and asking for waivers for the impact fees. You know, it seems to be, I don't know, kinda self-defeating, but... What's the general consensus? I mean, I, I, I have seen, you know, several other towns that have basically a system development charge that they charge, and it's a, it's a fee you pay when you get your water and sewer permits or whatever. Which, anything that takes it out of this arena, I think, is a good thing. Although it makes it more, um, more straightforward and it's a, a number that everybody pays. No wits and butts about it. But the whole concept in general, um, you know, I don't wanna spend a lot of time talking about what we need to do to adjust impact fees and make changes. Their, this board doesn't feel like, if they feel like we wanna go to the council and say we don't want impact fees. The council may say, tough, we're gonna keep them in place, and at that point we can come back. But what's the general consensus? Yay or nay for impact fees? And if you're not comfortable tonight, that's fine, we can talk about this at another, another meeting. I just would like people to start thinking about it, so we get some feedback on it.
I'd like to get some more information about how much we've actually had and used before putting out an opinion of whether or not we need them. I don't feel like I have enough of that.
And that's what we did in two thousand eleven. That was the report that was referred to, and I can share that with you. And I also wanna mention that procedurally, every time a request comes to the town council, to you, from a department head, to use impact fees, I'm consulted on that. And the question is asked, this is consistent with our capital improvements program, um, is this a, uh, use of the funds that's related to growth in the community? So there is, you know, a review process, and all of those things, and since two thousand eleven, is now documented in council resolutions. So it's not just an arbitrary, oh yeah, I think it's a good idea, let's spend the money on that. And I can be one and happy to pull all those resolutions and show you the kind of arguments and justification that the council reviews and considers in making the decisions, um, to in the utilization of those views.
It seems to me over the...
Much better records now than we did before.
Over the last several eight years, I would guess that the significant impact fees that have been used have been used by the school. Right, they used a bunch to buy the carpenter property, I remember that was, they put some money towards that.
Water and sewer for the, um, for the green, I think Valerie mentioned that that's, you know, a good example of an appropriate use of impact fees for that type of capital.
So I guess...
Yes, we can pull that data together, it might take us some time.
Okay, I think that's, I am, I personally think that's, that's data worth seeing too. See what, what we actually collected, what we've used it for. Bill, what are your thoughts?
I think we need to, if we're, if we're gonna charge a fee, we have to back up on what the basis of that fee is. It doesn't feel like we may have current backup at this point.
I, I agree with that. I mean, I think that's part of what Mr. Mayberry's, Mayberry's trying to do here. What are your thoughts on the concept in general?
I don't know that I'm informed well enough to answer that question.
Okay.
What's, so it's, call it what you want, it's a tax. So if you don't tax it this way, how do you tax it otherwise? And that's just through property, on our shared property tax, or how?
Or the users, user fees or whatever, yeah. It's really a tax on new properties.
Right. I'm not opposed to it if there's, if there is, uh, if it's, I guess it would have to be very clear to me that the impact is directly related to the development. I get a little bit anxious when it's like, oh, this, this bridge is worn out. I'm not saying there's any scenario like this in Newmarket, but this bridge is worn out, this new development's going in, and we think you need to upgrade the bridge. It's like, I don't feel too good about that.
I agree. I agree, exactly, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Um, I'd like to, uh, know typically, how often do you receive requests for waivers for impact fees? Do you have the general, uh, is it typically requested for the same reasons? Or is it just kind of scattered about as to what folks are looking for? I personally am under the belief that user fees are typically more favorable, because people know what they're paying for, they, they can see very clearly. You know, folks are, well, if it makes sense, if you're gonna build a large development, obviously your user fee to get a sewer hookup is going to be bigger than somebody's single family home, as opposed to just having a flat impact fee that just gets automatically assessed every single person. I also don't have a lot of experience in this area, so it'd be helpful to have a bit more insight.
Yeah, I thi- I think I've heard, I, I think it's, it's accurate that we probably need to get some more information as best we can.
We have had requests for waivers on ADU impact fees, every case that's come before us, without any, but he's saying, oh yeah, I'll pay the amount. And they've all been granted.
Majority of them have been.
Yeah, I think it was one or two. But I mean, we, we probably have six or seven a year, maybe, that come before us. So, and it's because we don't have a category in the schedule for those types of units. And maybe we should, I guess, is, you know, the thought process behind this.
Yeah, and my, my take on it is that if, I think a lot like Bill's, that if we're gonna keep these, you know, we need to have a very clear, um, understanding of the costs associated with it. I think we need to update the costs, much like we're doing with the ADUs, developing the cost for ADUs, is develop, updated costs for these so that, you know, they're accurate. Twenty years ago was a different world.
We have never had anyone appeal our impact fee system here in Newmarket. And it's been on the books for appeal just to be recorded.
And it could be because we're wrong in the other direction.
Right.
We've had them on the books since two thousand one. There have been other communities, Londonderry, I think Concord, where they have actually had court cases, and they were called to task of nothing in which they were assessed. But Newmarket has never been challenged.
What did you mean by that comment?
Uh, if we've never been challenged, is it because we don't charge enough?
Well, we haven't updated them for twenty years. A lot of communities, I, I don't, and I, I hate questions. I know that other communities charge a lot more for their impact fees, and ours are probably on the low side if we did a survey analysis.
Well, so, so I'll make a suggestion, why don't we, um, Diane, if you can get whatever information you can, as far as what, what we have on the books, and what the news and whatnot, and any other information I think might be helpful, I wanna store this on the agenda for the next meeting to have discussion, or two meetings from now, what, I don't wanna...
Well, one of the, I did convey to Steve, you know, about our discussion last month. And he, um, 'cause I'm doing this at his directive.
Sure.
Um, and he suggested that if, you know, there are board members that feel strongly about this, that this may be something that we wanna bring up at the joint meeting, uh, with the town council, so that we're all on the same page, and we're in agreement, and some kind of consensus.
Aye.
Which I thought was a really good idea. And usually that's like the third week in September.
I, I have to say I agree with you, but, and as we sit here now, I don't think, I certainly don't have a strong opinion one way or the other. I'd like to get the information. I think a lot of other members are the same way. Right, so let's see, get the information, and we can start developing our opinions and...
Do you, you wanna have a work session on it at the August meeting?
Is that enough time, is that enough time to, for you to get information?
I'll do my, do my best, I mean, I...
Okay.
I'm not always involved in all the, the negotiations that go on, you know, at the town council, at the administration level, but I have been asked on occasion to provide comments, and I do review the resolutions, because Steve wants, wants the input from the planner on those matters.
Sure.
One more question, so we talked about neighboring communities. Is the, in terms of the, how high these are, that's one question. The other question is like, was the structure of these neighboring communities, is it, does it differ a little, or is it similar?
I think it's, it's determined locally how they want, what they wanna charge impact fees for. And how they, how they, the methodology is unique to the statistics and demographics of the community. And you'll see that if you'd like to look at the reports that Bruce has prepared in the past. I mean, it's based on real hard data, it's not just based on, yeah, we think that's a good idea, we're gonna charge X, Y, Z.
And there are some towns that don't have impact fees. Some do, some don't, it's all over the map.
Diane, would it, is it beneficial to us, is, as we look at it, to say, okay, here's property taxes over here, here's impact, fees over here in town A, right, and then in town B, it's this and that? 'Cause I think you have to look at both, because they're probably subsidizing one with the other.
It's probably more building fee.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, like, how do we look at that?
It's really the building fee.
Right. And, and Jane, as, as a resident of Newmarket, I couldn't care less what any other town charges for taxes or impact fees. We pay what we pay here because people have voted to pay that.
Yep, understood.
So, you know, I don't think we should base anything we do on what other towns do, and especially impact fees.
It'd be based on the cost of money, the infrastructure, the commodity growth, and every community's growth is different.
Right.
Right. But I, I think I was kind of going back to your point, though, like, are we charging too little? Well, maybe we're charging little here because we're charged something, like, as you said, like a, a, a fee for paperwork, or a fee for this or that. I mean, is, is, how, how down the rabbit hole do we wanna go? That's what I'm asking.
Well, that's for us to decide.
Yep.
And to make, if we, you know, we can do, we can do a whole bunch of things. We can, as a group, take a vote, go to the council and say, we recommend we do away with impact fees. We can go and say we recommend making, no changes to the impact fee structure, we're happy with the way it is. We can recommend making changes, and anything in between. We can, it's up to us to decide how we wanna go forward. So I think it's, you know, I guess at this point, we need to get a little bit more educated on where we've been, and where we are, and where we need to go, and then we can make a decision based on that.
No, I, I, I definitely agree, we have to look at it.
Because it's also still just based on new development.
Right.
The impact fees only occur to new development. I mean, you could add, you could do an addition on your house and add, you know, five bedrooms, and you're not gonna be charged an impact fee. And that's why I think a lot of towns are dealing with it more on a building fee basis versus a fee to new development.
One of our things, Bill mentioned that you might discourage perhaps certain developments to, would it be high enough to discourage developers? Something like that, or?
We don't know, we don't know at this point, we don't know what. If we were to do an analysis and try to update our numbers, I, at this point, I have no guess of what they would be. I don't know whether they'd go up, down, or...
I was wondering, um, if Bruce is available to meet with the board at, at some point, if you'd like to ask him. I mean, he's sort of the, you know, the guru of impact fees in the state, because he's been doing it for so long. But, um, and he has a lot of experience, and he's, you know, we could have him come in and talk with the board, um, maybe a work session.
That'd be good, yeah.
And, um, and the other thing is, I would like to ask him maybe for an updated cost proposal, and how much it would cost. I mean, we don't really know. I know he's done a lot of updates for other towns. So he could, um, maybe give us a proposal, so when we do go to the council, if that's the tact that the board chooses to, to move, um, forward on, that we'd have some hard information, cost data to support it.
Yep.
And we could do as far as the capital improvement program.
I think it would be nice if he broke that out as far as recreation, updating recreation, school, water, sewer. Because if in fact we do go to a development cost on water and sewer, that would be done internally.
It would be done by the water and sewer department, yeah.
And it really won't be based upon, um, impacts from expansion. It's gonna be their actual costs for, in their capital improvement projections, but...
But the recommendation could be made to the town to have the water and sewer department available. It was in the report, in Bruce's report that was submitted to the council way back. But anyhow.
I don't know, Bruce, he's the guru in New Hampshire, but he lives in, his office is in Yarmouth?
He's, um, done a lot of work on all New England states, but yeah, his office is in Maine.
Okay.
But he's worked in New Hampshire ever since I've been working, which is about forty-two years.
Good for you, good for you.
Yeah, so, he used to work for the, uh...
Both, I guess.
He worked for a company called AER, Applied Economic Research. And then he worked for the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority for many years. And he's done a lot of consulting for them. His expertise is really in housing and, um, market analysis and that kind of thing.
So just before we close discussion on this, I would throw out there that if any of you are home tonight thinking hard about what we just talked about, or tomorrow, or later this week, if you have any other questions or comments, or come, have a awakening that there's another piece of information you might think be helpful, please email Diane and Sue and ask for it.
It'd be helpful for me that maybe in August, we can see a pro and a con argument.
Can, I was just gonna suggest, can we just, um, distribute the last planning board's memo to the, to the current board?
Yeah, and I do have the original report that Bruce did back in two thousand one, you know, providing the justification for all Bruce's fees. So, I mean, it's, that's available if you'd like to...
More like an abstract of pro and con of impact fees, period.
I think we looked at that. We did have a committee.
We had a committee, and we spent a lot of time, actually.
But I think...
I mean, there must be beyond the committee in Newmarket, there must be a philosophy in the industry of, okay, here's the argument for fees, here's the argument against them. I'd like to see those arguments.
You wanna hire the legal counsel, yeah, to do this analysis?
I'm not, I'm not asking for...
You're asking a tall order of bill, okay?
I think you're asking if it's available, if anyone's seen it.
Yeah, it's probably available through secondary sources.
And somebody must have debated this, as to the pros and cons of an impact fee.
It sounds like a, uh, it's like a, like a impact fee one-on-one class chart. I think there are courses...
Yeah, I don't need a legal brief on it.
And, you know, we have funding available for that. I just, I don't really feel my role is to educate everybody about impact fees, because it's a very specialized area. And it does require somebody that has a lot of background in demographics and, um, market research and so forth. And it's not an easy task, Bill. We spent how many, how many months, Valerie, on this before? We spent probably a year and a half on it.
To answer Bill's question, I'll go back and look when they, when we did the seminar at O E P, uh, what the handouts were, if it might be in there.
And Bill, I'll make some phone calls to the local towns that have impact fees. Some of, see, some people I know, see if they have any.
I'm looking at like three sentences.
Yeah, I understood.
Here, here's, here's...
A chart, pro, con, I understand.
Here's a report that HUD did, impact fees and, and housing affordability, and...
There you go.
There's a, there's a tough out there.
Secondary data is one thing, but we don't really have, uh, the ability to do a real extensive study like we did last time.
I don't think Bill is asking for that. Bill is asking for what are the pros and cons of the impact fees.
Three sentences that say, this is the general argument for them, and this is a general argument against them.
We'll see what we can dig up.
Yep.
As my mother would say, go to the Google.
Exactly. All right, um, chairman's report. Please report that I made this meeting. There's not much else I have to report. Committee reports, anything from the council, or ConCon, or any other committees?
We got our stormwater management plant online, I'm sure you're in.
Nice.
It's online, it is a work in progress. And, um, you should have ideas for types of, the work program that we have planned to have that's required by the MS four permit.
And that's for the town?
Yes.
Does that help move you closer to your goal on a revised ordinance to address stormwater?
We found out that we don't have to have a revised ordinance on the books until two thousand twenty. So we have a little more time to swim through that.
It's coming quick.
Meanwhile, the modern, meanwhile, the model ordinance that this, uh, Southeast Watershed Alliance had proposed a couple of years ago is in the process of being, so we're gonna leave that. Because that's the ordinance that specifically references to the MS four. But we are working towards that, and we probably have something on that soon.
Anybody have anything else to add? Anybody wanna make the motion?
Motion, do it, Jen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Passed unanimously, thank you all. See you in a month.